Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester zoning board of appeals meeting of February 27th, 2025. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, meaning that people are free to participate in person or on Zoom. For the record, the Zoom ID meeting number is 833-7438-7232. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, and on Zoom, Michael Nyman and James Gilotti, and I declare we have a quorum. Also present is the building commissioner, Rob Bakari, and our clerk, Natasha Dale. So we will begin the meeting with the... Did we have minutes on the 13th? Yeah. Okay. So we need to approve minutes of February 13th?
Move approval of the minutes of February 13th?
We need you guys in the seconding.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Roll call on the minutes.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Abstain, I wasn't present.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Minutes are approved. The first consent agenda item is the approval for the chair to sign the following decisions. Eight Gould Court, 10 10 R. Montvale Avenue, 38 Grapevine Road, 3 Kirk Road, and 4 Hawthorne Road. I need a motion to approve the signing of those decisions.
I move approval for the chair to sign the decisions, 8 Gould Court, 10 rear Montvale Avenue, 3 Kirk Road, and 4 Hawthorne Road.
38 Grapevine.
Oh, and 38 Grapevine.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Abstain, I don't think I'm involved in any of those decisions.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Decisions are approved. All right. New applications tonight, the petitioner Karen Scott Rice, seeking a variance from side yard setbacks pursuant to GZO 1.7, 3.2.1, to construct a new two-family house at 29 Cliff Road. I think they're represented by Mr. Cunningham.
Evening. John Tad Cunningham, 126 Denison Street, Gloucester.
Thank you. Understand you want to ask for a continuance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it'll be... We need a motion to continue to March 13th.
Move to continue the petition of 39 Cliff Road to March 13th.
Second.
Made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard a decision favorable. We'll see you on the 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second hearing of the evening is the petitioner Energy North, Inc., seeking a variance from lot frontage requirements pursuant to 1.7 and 3.2.3 at 40 Sergeant Street. Representative...
Good evening. Thank you for bearing with me. I got elevated to a panelist and now I got lost for a minute. I'm Harley Racer, attorney at Rich May Law Firm, 176 Federal Street in Boston. I represent Energy North Incorporated on this application with the consent and the support of the buyer, whose counsel is in attendance tonight and would speak in favor of this if she is given the opportunity. We are seeking a variance to the lot frontage requirements at 40 Sergeant Street. The reason we're seeking this variance is because we need to go to the planning board next week to, on our application, approval not required to combine these five lots and to make them usable. To do that, we need this variance since it's not currently in compliance. In the general industrial district, there is a lot frontage requirement of 65 feet, and we have here just over 20 feet. And so we are seeking a variance of approximately 45 feet. And the reasons are that this would be a financial hardship to not have this variance. There's no feasible way, no physical way, to create more frontage on the shape of this lot. If you look at the plans, it has a... This jut that protrudes down bordered by the railroad on one side. Sergeant Street has a dog leg to the south and then other properties to the east, and there's no way to extend the frontage. And so the unique topography and geography require us to get this variance so that we can make the property developable and marketable. There would be... There'd be no negative impact on the city or the surrounding area, and it would actually make this property that's been sitting vacant for many years to be productive, and we could move forward with, you know, making it developable. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that is what we're seeking tonight.
So, several questions. We're trying to follow along with lots. In one of the narratives, it talks about a Gloucester Avenue lot.
This is on...
Gloucester Avenue, yeah.
This is map 30... Number 33, Lot 3. See if you can see it on the plan.
Are you able to share?
I don't have an electronic version. You should have in your packet the...
I know, but I can't read it for crap. That's what I'm talking about. I mean, I got a... I could get some binoculars, but this is what we got.
It should be a... I think Mr. Bakari has a larger set there.
I have a question, Attorney Racer. So you're asking us to grant a variance on Sergeant Street?
Correct.
The frontage requirement is 65 feet?
Correct.
You're saying the frontage now is 20 feet?
Correct.
You're asking for a variance of 45 feet so that you can go to the planning board for an A&R, so that you can add four other lots to the parcel at 40 Sergeant Street?
To combine five lots into one, yes.
Correct. Well, your request, yes.
Yes.
And those lots, when you look at the city GIS map, are... So you have 10 Dale Avenue, 18 Dale Avenue, 131 Rear Gloucester Avenue, and a parcel on Millet Street that you want to combine with 40 Sergeant Street. And amongst all of these lots are right-of-ways running.
All of the right-of-ways are held by the current owner and would be transferred to Energy North under the PNS.
Okay. So the issue of the right-of-ways is really a planning board issue. Can you combine all these lots with 40 Sergeant Street with right-of-ways running? I guess that's a planning board issue. I guess my question is, why do you need a variance on Sergeant Street? Like, if you combined all these lots, how does that change the status of 40 Sergeant Street as a legally non-conforming lot? Why do you need this variance?
Well, I like your question. Maybe we don't, but I think we do because it creates a new lot, and the new lot would be non-conforming with the frontage. You know, when we go to combine the lots, it would create a new lot, and that new lot would no longer be compliant. This one isn't compliant as it is. This is a previously... A previous non-compliant frontage. And so the combination of these lots creates a new lot that would not be in compliance, and we want it to be... We want it to have... We want to have the variance so that there's no question as to the legality of it and the marketability and development of it.
Well, if you combine them all, you'd have a pretty big frontage on Gale Road. That could be a new frontage for you, where you can come in from Schoolhouse Road onto Gale Road. So I guess my question... For me personally, as I review your application, I'm just... I'm not opposed to combining all these GI lots into one big lot. I just don't know why tonight we would be granting a variance. We don't... You said you have no use for it, so we don't know... I mean, if you wanted to put a, you know, iron smelting plant, we might have a problem with you entering through a residential neighborhood to do that, and we might not really want to grant a variance. So without a use, I don't think we... I mean, for me personally, I don't know why we're granting a variance. It seems a little premature.
We cannot get the lots combined without a variance, and we can't purchase the property if we can't combine the lots. And I just want to correct one thing. There is... We have the Gale Road address for 10 Gale Road and 18 Gale Road, but if you look at the plan, it's a very small section that sticks out.
I'm going to stop you right there. The inability of you to be able to share this plan and point these things out to us is unfair to the members on Zoom who don't have the luxury of me looking next door at this plan that's in the folder that none of us received, so...
If you... I can try to pull that up. I apologize for that. Okay. I have it now enough that I can share my screen.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So here's the plan, and I can zoom in here. Over here, I just want to draw your attention to Gale Road. These parcels are between Gale Road and the property that will be part of the combined lot. Only this section, if you can see where my hand cursor is, are there. That's what connects to Gale Road, and so that doesn't give us more frontage there.
No. Mr. Attorney Racer, can you go up to the GIS... The GIS map? Yes.
Yep.
So that Hammerhead Lot, yeah, right there, right where your cursor is right now. Click on that. That's 10 Gale Road. That 10 Gale Road has a pretty good frontage on Gale Road. Now, I think that portion of Gale Road is not developed, or at least from my drive around, I don't think it's developed, but... Yeah, right where your cursor is. Isn't that 10 Dale Road?
Let's see, 32... 32... 32... 22. Yes, that is. That's 10 Gale Road. Yes, correct.
Right. So that's a big portion of frontage on Gale Road, right there. Exactly. I mean, that could be your frontage into this big parcel if you were going to do an A&R. That other lot to the right, 43-2, is another parcel you want to join. Yep.
Correct.
43-1 is a parcel you want to join. But amongst all these parcels are these right-of-ways, so that's really not our issue. I don't mean to go down there. That's a planning board issue. But when you go to Sergeant Street, which I agree, there's a very small... Yep, very small entrance from Sergeant Street onto this very big general industrial parcel. For me personally, I mean, you know, granting a variance is a two-step test. Like, one, is there a hardship? Yes, you probably have a hardship. You're correct. You can't expand the width of that entrance because of land ownership on either side of Sergeant Street. The second test is, is it in keeping with the general intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? And without a use, I can't make that decision.
Well, any use that this property will have is going to use this as an access point. The access that will be... Once plans come to fruition, we don't have concept plans at this point, but we will have an entrance that comes from the Blackburn Circle area and then an entrance exit at Sergeant Street. There won't be entrances and exits on Gale Road.
Why not? Because if it was really an industrial purpose and you're coming off of Blackburn Industrial Circus and you were... Circle, and you were going down Schoolhouse Road, I mean, there's no residences there. You could have industrial use there, you could have... But if you were doing an industrial use through Sergeant Street, which is all residential all around that, I mean, that makes a difference to us as to when we're granting variances and what the use is. And I'm just saying for me personally, I really have a hard time knowing what to do with this application without a use on the lot.
Well, I appreciate that, and I had always considered this to be the frontage. And the concepts that we had discussed with the purchaser would be that there would be an entry from the Blackburn Circle area, and that would be the one that would be predominantly used for any industrial use. You get the... You can bring the trucks in from there. This down here, though, is just due to the shape and topography of the lot. We consider this the frontage. I'm not sure...
Is it the lowland of the lot? Yeah. Okay.
Part of the issue is you've started to allude to trucks, but you gave us nothing in the application to tell us what you're going to do there. I have not done a grant of variance into a residential neighborhood without knowing what you plan to do in that property, because that's a factor in whether I would vote for a variance or not for the frontage. I don't have any obligation to make it easier for you. I mean...
Well, I'm not asking you to make it easier for me. I don't think that we need... I don't think that a use is necessary to seek a compliant... A compliant lot where it's not compliant. You know, we're seeking...
Pre-existing GI lot that's functioned for 100 years. And the only thing that triggers a variance would be doing something different.
Even if we gave you this variance, if you... That you would... It's still a... You would still have to come in for a special permit, wouldn't you, to do something on this lot?
Well, there are some things that are permitted as a right, but if... Yeah, any special permit that we need or any other relief, we would come back when it comes to... When it comes to development. But before we can purchase this property, before we can enter this deal to make this a productive property, we need to be able to combine these lots. And we've been told by the planning board that we cannot combine these lots to create a new lot unless we obtain this variance so that it is a compliant new lot when we go to do that. So we're in a little...
They have no concerns about the right-of-ways that are through between all these other mid... Small lots.
I've had discussions with the planning director about the rights of way, and they understand that the current owner owns all of the rights of way, and title will pass to Energy North when they purchase the property. So all the rights of way will be owned by Energy North. So they will extinguish when... For... Once they record title.
I mean, I could... I mean, looking at the plan and the lots, I mean, the lots you're talking about are the only lots that... About these right-of-ways, so I could see how you might own all the rights in the right-of-ways, but... And I understand... Like, normally, you would come to the zoning board to get this relief before you go for the A&R. But... So I understand your strategy in coming here before you go to the planning board for the A&R, but I just... I personally... I don't know how my other board members feel, but I personally don't feel comfortable granting this variance without knowing anything about the use of the future lot, where the entrance is going to be. I mean, you say, yes, we would go off Schoolhouse Road. Like, why couldn't this become a Gale Road address, and you have enough frontage on Gale Road, and you don't even need to come see us? Right?
I'm not sure that we... I don't know if we have enough on Gale Road. We don't... We had no intent or plan to have an entryway on Gale Road. This one...
I feel more comfortable granting it on Gale Road than I do on Sergeant Street.
I understand, and I'm not trying to be strategic. I'm trying to be practical, and I'm trying to do what I need to to get the A&R. I mean, we have to combine these lots if this is going to go forward and become a useful, productive site. And so there's already an entrance at Sergeant Street. That's already there. It's already in existence. And then there's an access that comes down from School Road. And so we are trying to simplify it, combine the lots, and that's just what we are dealt... Those are the... That's the hand we're dealt, that this is the frontage. Sergeant Street is the frontage. And we recognize that we need a variance to create this new lot that is not going to change anything. The internal lines will just disappear, but we need to... We need this variance before we can combine those lots. Otherwise, the property will remain undeveloped, unsold, and, you know, it won't become productive. If you're... I mean, if I could have assurance that the planning board would combine the lots with a Gale Street address or without a variance, you know, I would be fine going to the planning board, but I've been told that we need to do this first.
You've been told that. We've had no communication from the planning director or anybody saying, knowing any more than we know. Based on what you've told us or have been willing to tell us up to this point, you... I wouldn't support it. I'm not going to... I don't see... You're pre-existing. I don't see why you need a variance.
Because it's a financial hardship for us to not get the variance because we can't go forward with combining the lots to create the A&R. And so it means that we can't move forward with this.
Why do you say you can't do that?
Because it creates...
Have you had a conversation with the planning director, not the planning board?
And because of the... And because the ordinances say, when you make a new lot, when you combine lots, it creates a new lot, and the lot has to... You have to certify when you create the new lot that it is compliant with the zoning. And we can't get compliant with the zoning without this variance.
You're not asking us for any other variances to make it compliant?
No, there's no other variances that we need.
Side yard issues, you've got buildings on there.
We're not seeking a certif... A certificate of occupancy. We're not seeking to use those buildings. If we were to use those buildings, we would request relief for them, but we're not doing any use with the buildings. We're only trying to clean up this property so that it is compliant.
When we clean up pre-city council permit or planning board permit, we clean up everything on the lot to say what's sitting there is now compliant to variance, and then you go to the next board. I don't understand why this one thing, and until... Well, maybe they need to tell us.
Well, the only other... The only other item of relief that I could see that we would need if we were going to use the buildings, but if you want to clean it up, it would be the distance between the buildings. You know, I don't think that those buildings are going to remain as when the property gets developed. So, you know, I would be happy to request a variance. I'm sorry?
No, why would it? It's a huge parcel. You would not be utilizing yet.
So, I mean, if I need a variance for the distance between those buildings, which is the only other component that I see, or the... For the right side yard, I request that now if that's necessary to get the variances that... The other variance to the frontage so that I can move forward with the planning board.
Could I suggest something, Attorney? Without a proposed use on the parcel, it's a hard ask for us to say we can enter through Sergeant Street, which means you're coming through a residential neighborhood to access a general industrial lot. Could I suggest that maybe we continue this so that you can look at Gale Road? And I understand that you have to develop a road down there to actually access this frontage. And I don't know how big this frontage, but it looks a heck of a lot bigger than the frontage on Sergeant Street. Plus, this Gale Road portion of the lot that you want to combine enters from Blackburn Industrial Circle, enters through Schoolhouse Road, it's not going through residential neighborhoods. I personally would feel more comfortable granting a variance for access to a general industrial lot that we do not know what the use is going to be from an area that's not through residences. This is going through a residential neighborhood, so that's my main concern. I'm like, which one is it?
I hear you on that, but the entrance there is already existing, and it already is a general industrial district.
I understand that that's nice and convenient for your client, and maybe you have to spend some money to put a road in and get an access through a non-residential neighborhood, but for me... For me, that... For me, I will not grant this variance that you're requesting tonight. So if you want to continue it and look at other alternatives, I would be willing to do that, but if you want to go to vote, I'm happy to go to vote.
Well, just so I'm clear on what it is that we would be looking at is, we would be looking at, if necessary, a variance or not for a frontage on the Gale... On Gale Road, but this entrance still remains. It's not... That's not going to be...
Right. So that was my original question. Why do you need a variance from us? You already have an entrance there.
Well, as I said, it's... When we combine the lots, it's going to create a new lot that would then be non-compliant. It's not... They're not going to approve it as a new law.
Non-compliant now. It doesn't have the frontage.
It is not compliant now. It is not compliant now, and it's a standalone lot right now. When we add the other lots, it's going to become a new lot, and it can't be a new lot unless it's compliant, and that's why we need the variance here. It really... It really has less... It has less to do with any plans to drive trucks in through there. It's just that it's the fact of the matter that we can't combine the lots without this
I personally am not willing to grant a variance without knowing what the use of the lot is. So that's where I'm...
I agree too. I don't know what the big secret is. You could be putting a nuclear power plant in there, and I'm not going to give you a variance to do it.
Yeah, I agree. I can't.
Any... Well, I don't see how the question turns on the use, but I understand, so...
Variants I've ever been involved in, it matters what's going on and what's going to be doing, because there's a whole sets of criteria on the variance.
One of which is in the intent... Is it in... With the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and we don't know, because we don't know what the use is. I mean, one of the intents and purposes is to make the best use of land, and I understand this will make a better use of land, but the entrance is through a residential neighborhood, so...
Yeah, to make better use of land is... That's not really well-defined. That's not what you said, Harley. I understand that's what Catherine said, but it's not very... That's not what you said, Harley. I understand. That's what Catherine said, but it's not very well defined. So smell the tea leaves, Harley. You don't have the votes, right? So.
I understand that. What I'm, what I'm looking for is a little more uh, direction on, you know, if we continue with this, what can I come back with that would be, you know, palatable for the board?
Come back with not just, you spoke to the planning director, but him, them writing us. Telling us that they wouldn't grant it without that because we've had no communication from them. We, we can ask for their opinion and. Let it continue until they get back to us or you could pursue it sooner.
And I would like to see, I would like to see whether, why Gale Road can't be your entrance to a general industrial parcel. Because that entrance is more compatible with a general industrial use. Than Sergeant Street. I understand Sergeant Street's developed and you have to put a road in for, for Gale Road, but. I think you need to look at that.
And all the discussion over the years since Linsky's closed. Has been that the access up through Blackburn Circle. Was how this property would someday be reused.
It's, it's really a better access point, yeah.
That, that is the, that's, that's the access point that we would, that we would use. That's why it's attractive to us. Again, I, the, the, the road, the road at Sergeant Street is very, i, i, it's not even important to us. It's just that it creates a non-conforming lot that we can't get it combined to do the rest of the development work on.
If you make Gale Road, why can't you make Gale Road your frontage?
I will see if I can do that.
Why can't you do that? Yeah.
I'll see. I'm, I'll be before the planning board one week from today and, you know, I can talk through them. Based on the conversation we've had tonight. Um, and, and if you would be willing to continue this, uh, I, I'd be happy to come back here at your next meeting and, and. Um, you know, keep moving forward on this. I understand the board's um, concerns here and, and, and like I said, I'm, I'm. I'm just trying to get a compliant lot out of this. Um, so I will look at the Gale Road uh, and treating it as a frontage. Um. And talk to the planning board next week.
Yeah, so then potentially then, I think, listen to Catherine, if you have enough frontage on Gale Road, you potentially don't need us.
Correct. We, if, if I could, I would have to, um, yeah, no, if, if I could, I, I would have to change the address for the property. Um.
I have to do a road permit plan, but yeah.
And Sergeant Street can still be an exit.
Yeah, and I, I think, I mean, I think for me too, if that gets you, if that gets you your land, in other words, if that, if, if Gale. If you have enough frontage on Gale to do your purchase and sale and get your land. And then you know more what you're doing later on, then potentially you come back to us for some reason.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll be back before you on this project, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, I, um, I'll take that uh, into consideration and look at that and have my homework to do and look at Gale Road and see. Um, but if you would please, um, I would, I would be open to continuing this if, if the board is amenable to that.
I think that's better than going into a public hearing at this point without any more information, so. I'll take a motion to continue to March thirteenth.
Have had enough time, two weeks?
Doesn't have to be March twenty-seventh.
Yeah, March twenty-seventh, March twenty-seventh, I'll be here in person.
March twenty-seventh sounds good. That, that should have enough time to be back before the board with um, more information.
On the. Petition of. Forty Sergeant Street. I would move continuance to our hearing on March twenty-seventh.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote to continue.
Ms. Schlick D?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decisions will continue to March twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll have, we'll, we'll inquire for some more information too.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Take care.
Anyone have anything else they want to discuss?
Think I'm good.
No, I was talking to the members. Sorry. If not, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Schlick D?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Have a nice night, everyone. Yep, take care.